Regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held September 16th, 2014 at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Howery.
Here.
Councilmember Garrison.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here. And tonight, I would ask if Damian would like to come and lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us? Sorry, we didn't warn you ahead of time?
Yeah, that's you, Damian.
Damian Browning from Steps to Recovery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We actually have a little certificate for you.
So this is pre-med.
Yes, we knew that you were going to say the pledge, but we did let you know. Okay, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, council members, I thought I was going to have until morning be able to share a press release with the council, but apparently one of our Phoenix news stations has gotten hold of the story and I want to make sure that the council's not surprised by the fact that today our police department went down to Tucson and arrested Cecilio Cruz, who's been charged with the secondary degree murder of a man who assaulted his office back in 1997. My hat's off to our police department and the county attorney who stepped on this case and they're looking forward to prosecuting. After all these years, justice will be done.
Great. Gives me shivers down my back. Well, thank you very much to our police department. Appreciate your tenacity in finding justice.
And again, apologies to our local media as well, who don't agree with it at all. Everybody who rules. And then, just a reminder that Rhythm and Ribs is on this pronouncement. Thunder Valley Rally starts on Friday. We've got a lot of great events coming out. The council should be open any day.
Okay. Counsel, Mr. Pratt.
Yeah, we did just finish Rhythm and Ribs and I just want to say, I think it was a great event. I talked to many, many people who were here. There were a lot from the valley and I heard 99% of the comments I heard were very positive. They appreciated the music, the way it was run. And, you know, even though he doesn't take credit for it, he's pretty humble, I think we should recognize the job that has done in forming a team, as he says, it's teamwork. And he's got people like Ryan Bigelow over here helping him and other departments, but he does a good job of recording the team. And the other person we should recognize for her efforts are our vice mayor. I think she was at that Chamber of Commerce tent all weekend.
Twenty hours, twenty and a half hours.
Yeah. Well, you put a lot of time in to support that and I noticed it and I think it's a great thing that you do that because I know it's volunteer. So anyhow, I think it was a great event. It brought a lot of people to town and they loved the music and those people will return to town, so it's good for our city.
I did think it was a great event and it seemed to be very well attended this year. Did you have, what did you think about the attendance?
It was packed every evening. Friday after people got off work, it really filled up and then Saturday it started early. It was good.
Wonderful. Well, I attended, oh, yes, do you have something?
I had the pleasure of going to the senior center on 9/11 and having lunch with the people at the senior center and our firemen and they had actually just got through putting the flags out around town wherever they were going to put them and it was very rewarding.
Very nice event. Yeah, the senior center does such a great job. Speaking of which, I just had lunch with Elaine Brimner yesterday and we talked about the senior center and some of the challenges and how difficult it is for them to continue to have many, many dozens of little fundraisers where sometimes they get $1,000 here and $1,000 there and it seems like the amount of meals keeps going up and that coincides or segues into, I attended the governor's council on aging in Phoenix Thursday and Friday and really got a lot of information. And one is, one idea is that by 2030, one in five Americans will be 65 or older and 90% of adults aged 65 and older say they hope to stay in their homes for as long as possible. And we also talked about, we had a little seminar on suicide among the elderly and I sent the council some information on that and I'd be happy to forward it to the media if you would like to have that. There's some pretty staggering details about those kinds of situations. And Doug and I just met with Clint, hang on just a second, with Clint Chandler from Jeff Flake's office and that was one thing that I brought up to them was the Older Americans Act hasn't been reauthorized by our legislators and shared with them how important that was. You know, it's, a lot of those services keep people in their homes instead of having to go to a nursing home, which is less expensive for those who are low income, it's less expensive for the taxpayers for them to stay in their own homes than to go elsewhere. So just the Meals on Wheels, that's part of that program and if, you know, someone needs help with their personal care, bathing and such, to stay in their own home, it's part of that. I know that NACOG had really reduced that program, you know, because of the sequestration. So we shared that with Mr. Chandler. Also Nick Heckler, a regional representative, was also with him. We talked about water issues and all the things that we're working on as a region for water issues and I think I heard, when I left, I heard Doug sharing some information with him about Matt Force's work and so we had a great conversation with them and it's very nice when our legislators, our congressional delegation and our senators, they send someone here locally. We really appreciate that. So we had a great conversation with them. And that's my report for this evening. The next item is proclamations and we have two tonight declaring September 27th, 2014 as Verdi River Day. We have Pam Miller here who, oh, okay. Oh, one had the second, I saw that. Thought I was going to have it be the whole month, but it was like, okay. I can live with that one. Okay, so, get the right one here. So we have Pam Miller with us from the Verdi Independent and for many years she has been the lead person with a team of people that plan Verdi River Days. I think probably the Verdi Independent's been doing it for, is it 28 years now?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years now. And she's been involved with it for probably 20, I'm guessing. No?
Eight.
Oh, just only eight? Okay, you're not that old, right? But she's here tonight to accept this proclamation. Whereas the Verdi River is a riparian resource that winds its way through the heart of Cottonwood and the Verdi Valley, and whereas the citizens of Cottonwood cherish our natural environment, and whereas Cottonwood's most precious natural resource, the Verdi River Corridor, reflects our community, who we are, and why we live here, and whereas the Verdi River Corridor is a welcome and essential bed and breakfast for neotropical birds on the arduous migration path between northern and southern Americas, and whereas more than 340 bird species have been recorded flying, trilling, and resting along the green riparian pathway and some of the highest breeding bird densities of any North American habitat existing in, and the highest bird densities of any northern American habitat exist in the Verdi River riparian area, and whereas the Verdi River is a unique and important environmental and economic resource. It contains a significant amount of the riparian habitat left in Arizona where 85% of all wildlife in the area looks for sustenance and is critical to the survival of numerous native aquatic and terrestrial species, and whereas the Verdi River is a significant water supply and recreational corridor, and whereas we risk losing this treasure if we don't strategize together to preserve it for future generations. Whereas Arizonans must continue our work to successfully find accommodation for all the roles that rivers play, and whereas Verdi River Day was organized in 1988 to promote awareness of the Verdi River's distinctive riparian habitat, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 27th, 2014 as Verdi River Day in the City of Cottonwood. And just to let you know that on the 27th, Verdi River Day will be at Dead Horse Ranch State Park and Councilmember Terrence Pratt has agreed to read the proclamation that day as I will be out of town, so he will be with you to read it that day. Is there anything that you would like to share about it?
I would like to thank the City of Cottonwood for the proclamation and I'd also like to thank Mayor Jones and the City of Cottonwood for your donations to the event. We have anywhere between 3,000 and 4,000 residents that come out to the event and our river, to me, just gets more and more important every year. So again, thank you.
You're welcome.
As the mayor.
After hearing that proclamation, I think it's imperative that we have the Verdi River definitely portrayed in our city logo.
We like it there, right? Okay, and we have another proclamation. And tonight we have with us Damian Browning from Steps to Recovery and after I'm finished with reading the proclamation, he's going to come up and give us about a 10-minute presentation on his work in our community. So the proclamation goes, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. Whereas in 2012, 2.5 million people aged 12 or older received specialty treatment for a substance use disorder and 34.1 million adults aged 18 or older received mental health services, according to the 2012 National Survey on Drug Use and Health. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions more who need help, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the City of Cottonwood, and I might just throw in there, Matt Force, invite all residents of Cottonwood to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, Diane Jones, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 as National Recovery Month in Cottonwood, Arizona, and call upon the people of Cottonwood to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand the 16th day of September 2014. And Mr. Browning, if you'd like to come up and give your presentation and when you're finished, I'll present the proclamation to you.
Well, I'll start by saying that we open our, well, it's an organization now, our business, and we've been open a year and about a month now and I've already presented one time when we first opened. Since that time, we've have expanded and now we have a women's facility that holds 17 women. We have a men's facility that holds 13 men. Why I wanted to come here is, you know, substance abuse issues, whether we're affected directly by family, neighbors, at work, we all know somebody that has an issue or somebody that knows somebody and it affects our community, it really does, you know, whether it makes our place, maybe our neighbors, or an unsafe place for our children. So it's a real issue and like you said in the proclamation, recovery is possible, is available, and it does work. Recently, we became a nonprofit organization, 501(c)(3) and I want to come and talk to the council about things that I need. I'm looking for grant writers, I'm looking for donations, whether, when it comes, when I talk about donations, either, not just cash, but there's also toiletries, linens. We have a garage that we have full of furniture, that the public's donating furniture, nice furniture, and when these people get out of our, when they stay, they stay with us for six months and when they get out, we give them furniture if they need furniture. Usually they come in and they've lost everything. So we're taking furniture, we're taking, we also are taking volunteers in to come and talk to our people. We have a life coaching session every day on life skills from parenting to boundaries to budgeting to CPR. We have people from the fire department coming in and doing CPR, first aid training. People from the college come in and do stuff on education and goals. So we're really trying to, you know, and I have to say that, you know, rehabilitation is a prevention. I know we focus a lot on prevention with the kids and everything else, but, you know, focusing on people that have substance abuse issues and trying to get them some serious safe help. Our place is, we started it to be affordable, to be safe, be structured, and to be example-driven for people that are serious and really want some help with their issues. And it is working. We have people that are graduating all the time, just talking to the mayor about it, you know, this girl just graduated and she's gotten her job back, you know, she had a drinking problem really bad and they had fired her from her job and she's got her job back, she's getting her kids back, she's getting ready to get into her own place. I mean, the transformations in these people is just amazing. And we need some help. You know, some of our visions are that we would, we would like to continue to have a safe place here for the community, you know, to make, to get these people to be productive members of their families and the community and society. You know, our people go out and interact with society, they do community service. There's a lot of things, we're more of a behavior modification program and that's how we're different from the other places, you know. We just don't put them in a bed. You know, they come in and they get busy living life. They get busy, they get a job, they go out and do service to the community, they're talking to their families, we're going to life coaching, I mean, there's a lot of things. And we're grilling them all the time on their behavior, you know, we're always on them about better behavior, you know. We'd like to keep that, you know, but we need some help from the community. I don't know, really, since we got the nonprofit and we're an organization now, we're just trying, I'm trying to network and see what help is available. That's kind of why I'm here. I'm going around everywhere talking to people, looking for grant writers. We'd like to get another facility or maybe our own facility because we pay a lot, we're renting the facilities we're in and it's really, really a hardship on us because of the, we only charge 125 a week for these people and we provide all the toiletries and all the cleaning utensils, all the cleaning stuff. They have to get their own food and their own clothing, but otherwise. But, you know, we would like to open a place for transitional living places, some safe transitional living places because the ones that are open around here could be safer. We'd like to open a place for like a clean living environment, that'd be like permanent residence for people with behavioral health issues and mental issues that need, that need some structure, you know, that need to stay in a place like that and be accountable. And we'd like to open a place for women and children or men with children, like a family place, because there's a lot of women with children we've had to turn away. So those are kind of some of our visions for this community. You know, our house, our house is different because we do a lot of other stuff. You know, we do the life coaching, we spend a lot of one-on-one time with our people, we're really serious, we're really passionate, we're very involved, and we're kind of overwhelmed, but it's worth it, you know. It's worth it to see these people put their lives back together, it really is. So I'm not really sure what can happen, you know, I need some kind of funding, some kind of direction. I don't know what the council can do to help. I've actually emailed a few people on the council, I've been looking out. I would like people from the council, if they're interested, to get a brochure from me and come check out our facility and maybe sit down and talk and see what we really do because I'm, you know, there's not a lot of time here and I understand that. But I'm welcoming anybody that would come and have any ideas or, you know, I don't know, I don't know what, I really don't know what direction to go. I know I need some help and I know that I want to keep this, I want to keep a real place for these people, so our community is safer. I have three children of my own, you know, and so that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to do that and I think we're doing a good job. We do need some help, I do need some funding. And, you know, I'm just grateful that I'm given this opportunity because in my life, I've had a lot of hardships in my own life, you know, and I'm able to, I'm able to relate to these people on that level and help them through that, you know. We promote, we promote a lot of good things. We promote going back and getting a career, you know, we promote setting goals. You know, a lot of these people coming in, they've lost their family, they've lost everything. So, you know, there's a lot of people that, we start doing parenting stuff with them, you know, and talking to them about calling their kids every day, you know, putting families back together. I think that's all I got. Is there, can I give you guys a brochure?
Absolutely, please. So for members of the public, and we do have members from the public and we called, from our television public, and so we just heard from Damian Browning and he and his wife Anne run the Steps to Recovery Homes here in Cottonwood. And I visited with them last week. I know Councilmember Pratt has been involved with them this past year since their inception, really, and I'm very impressed with what they do in the community and their, like he said, they work with folks on finances, education, hygiene, help them understand recovery, communication, relationships, parenting. They help them with job skills. I saw computers in the men's home where they can look for jobs on the computers, so they help them do resumes, interviews, presentations, talk about self-acceptance, boundaries, goal-setting, behavior modification, and much more. And their mission is to provide a safe environment free from any illicit drugs or alcohol for people with substance abuse issues. And they focus on behavior modifications and are dedicated to consistency, structure, and direction in their homes. So if there are any members of the public in our television public or here locally, here in our council chambers who could assist with grant writing, or if there's anyone who could assist with finances to help them continue these programs, and if there's anyone who could, as he said, he collects furniture. who could, as he said, he collects furniture and other items for setting up a home once they get out. And he can, Damian can be reached at 928-592-2603, that is 928-592-2603, Anne can be reached at 928-821-3526, again, that's 928-821-3526. Their website is www steps2recoveryhomes.com, and they can be reached by email at steps2recoveryhomes@gmail.com. So I'm really just visiting there, and I know that a lot of our council members are very understanding and supportive of the work that you do, and like you said, there's not one of us in this room that haven't been impacted by this issue in our communities. So looking at it with a positive light, that there are people here trying to help, really, I mean, just seeing all that you and Anne do, and you're going to college, and you've got three kids, and you've got both of these homes, you work every day with the people in the homes, trying to provide the guidance and the help that they need, I think you're making a huge difference in our community, and I want to say thank you for what you do, and hang in there, because I know it's gotta be, there's only so many hours in the day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so you're doing great work. So any questions from members of the council, or Mr. Browning, comments? So I think we all have it on our minds now, the things that you need, and we'll keep that discussion. We just finished our budget, but we'll be going into another one in late, well, probably around January. So there's a possibility that we could have you come in and present to the council on some of your needs, and see if the council is able, this year was really a tough year budget-wise, but see if they're able to assist in any way, but I think the grant-writing thing is a big piece of it, and, you know, you just don't get your funding all from one place, it has to be a multitude of efforts, but congratulations on the work you're doing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I admire you.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Okay, if there are no questions. On behalf of the council, we do this proclamation. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
This wishes for every success.
Thank you.
We have the inaugural Cottonwood Historic Home Tour event scheduled for November 8th, 2014, and we have our illustrious colleague, Mr. Tim Ilinski, to present to us.
And Mr. Bigelow.
And Mr. Ryan Bigelow, who works with our Parks and Recreation Department.
Damian's a tough act to follow, so it's probably pills in comparison as far as importance, but we wanted to give the council a presentation, also the public, on the Historic Home Tour this year, so it's the inaugural event, we've never had one here in Cottonwood before. But the council graciously formed the Historic Preservation Commission a few years ago, and one of our goals was to promote economic development in Old Town, so we feel like this meets that goal. It's been mostly Ryan and I planning it, so it's been a challenge, and it's been a lot of hard work, but I really just want to touch base and just let you know what our goals are for the, for the home tour, and answer any questions that you have, okay? So we're hoping to sell sixty tickets. It's the first event, so I think that's a pretty realistic goal, to sell sixty tickets. We're charging twenty-five.
Sixty tickets?
Sixty. Do you think that's too high?
I think that's way low.
I think it's low, but we want to have a realistic goal.
And Clarkdale's tour has been going on for some time now, the most they've ever done is two hundred.
Okay.
That's an established event that's been years and years, most they've ever gotten this.
Well, Jerome has been doing it for a real long time, and how many do they usually have?
They get in thousands.
Yeah, so sixty sounds like you better be prepared for more.
Yes, thanks. We're, we have a contingency plan, but, you know, we just want to start off simple. Yeah, and it's a self-guided tour, so it's really a walking tour, so, you know, Jerome's tour is you hop in a bus and they drive you around, and many other tours across the state are that way. This one, it requires a little effort.
You have to hoof it a little bit, huh?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
So, anyway, at twenty-five bucks a pop, if we sold sixty tickets, that would give us fifteen hundred dollars to go to the Civic Center, and that's really what this is about at this point, is to donate some money to the Civic Center to help with that restoration. So fifteen hundred bucks doesn't seem like much, but it's fifteen hundred dollars more than we've ever given the Civic Center, as long as I've been on council, so it's a good start. What else do we want to say about it?
I just wanted to note that at this point in time, this is completely volunteer, and we've gotten a few donations, but there hasn't been anything that money that the City of Cottonwood has had to spend on this event. We have registrations available online, we've set up, or through the City of Cottonwood set up a Facebook page. We also have these really well-made flyers and posters that hopefully you guys have all seen up around Old Town promoting the event, so we want to make sure and get these up to the business too, and if you guys need access, we have some access.
We'll leave some at the door in case there's any members of the public that want to take them. We currently have three homes and four businesses on the tour, so we'd like to get another two homes on the tour, and we've both gone door-to-door knocking on nice homes and begging people to put their home on the tour, but with no luck yet. So if anybody out there in TV land would like to have your home on the tour, please, please contact either one of us.
I wouldn't say no luck, there's a lot of next year.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, give me a little time, right?
Well, people don't really know what to expect from this first year either, so, you know, I think next, if this progresses and continues, and I certainly hope that it does, we'll be better prepared next year, and I think people know what to expect and put their home on the tour, and maybe even I'll put my home on the tour.
Mine's vintage 2006.
Yeah, well, you know, we're getting desperate at this point, so, but if anybody has another home that they want to put on the tour, please, please let us know. We're also selling ad space on the, there will be a map that everybody gets when they, when they register, and they'll register at the Civic Center, so they'll be given a map, and there will be some ads on that map, so if there's any businesses out there who would like to advertise on that, please contact us as well. We have three different price ranges, fifty dollars to 125 to 250 dollars to advertise on that. And again, all the money goes to the Civic Center, so it's for a good cause.
It is.
Yeah, we've had some pretty good feedback so far, we've got a couple businesses that have given some in-kind contributions, and so we're doing pretty well on that. Again, it's, the city's not going to be out any money on this, it's going to be self-funded, and the Civic Center will be the ultimate beneficiary.
And it is in conjunction with Walk On Me, so we hope to be able to promote it that way, and eventually one day have its own, own event on its own, have its own, and we felt good to start, it was a good, made a lot of sense to come and walk on me.
The other thing we need is volunteers. So if anybody on TV land would like to volunteer, it's November 8th, from 11 to 5, you don't have to volunteer for the whole shift, you can do a split shift if you'd like, we'll work with you. We need volunteers to both register folks that come in, and to be docents or guides at the homes, and the docent is the person that will be at the homes, who has the history on the home to share with the attendants on the, on the tour.
And we hope to gather through the Historic Preservation Commission and the volunteers to have the history of the homes, we would expect we have sent to, if there hadn't any books.
That's right.
And have a couple of other.
So I'll volunteer.
Great.
Help you.
Okay, we'll sign you up.
All right.
So that's one.
[laughing]
Great. Well, come on, what about the rest of you? All right, I'm not going to push my luck, but that's really all we have, so again, out in TV land, please, if you know volunteers, send them, send them our way, and that would be through the City of Cottonwood, how would they contact?
Your contact information is all on the flyer.
Yeah.
Or they can contact me through the City of Cottonwood.
So just go to the City of Cottonwood, and then under Historic Preservation Commission, you'll find information on this home tour.
Okay.
And also, you can like it on.
On Facebook?
Facebook.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
So they, the phone number is on that page on the website?
No, the flyer's on the website, so you can.
The flyer's on the website, and the flyer has the phone number of who to contact.
It's also on the Walk On Me website.
Okay. So contact Ryan Bigelow at the City of Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Department, and he is also on the Historic Commission, or Councilmember Tim Ilinski, and his phone number is on the flyer, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so, and you can also get that by getting on cottonwoodaz.gov and going into the council, and there would be a link to his information. So you can get that information a couple different ways. Nice, Mayor?
Can you give us some idea what would be required of a volunteer, what exactly they might be doing? I know it's, it's first time, but.
Yeah, thanks, really just being friendly and personable and.
Leads me out.
What's that?
So they'll lead me out.
Yeah?
That's too funny, Karen.
If you have a passion for history, that would probably help, but, you know, again, if they're going to be a docent at the home, we're going to give them a printed-out sheet that has all the history of the home, so really, it's just to meet and greet with folks, to interact with people, to enjoy yourself, mostly. It's going, it's going to be a great event, there's going to be a lot of activity in Old Town, really just people who want to pitch in for a day, there'll be a lot of peers, I'm sure, it'll be fun.
We're looking for advocates of Old Town and advocates of Cottonwood, so thank you.
I'll tentatively volunteer, but I gotta check my calendar and see what's going on.
There are no height restrictions at all, so.
I can still get all over.
So what they're saying is they want you to have an interest in history, but they'll take any warm body that would like to volunteer.
Yeah, we're looking, we need about twenty-five, really, to thirty volunteers for the event to make sure that it runs seamlessly.
All right.
Any questions from council or members of the public?
So I would suggest that you write a little article, or you've already written it, and give it to Rudy for the city's Facebook page.
Okay.
Calling for volunteers, that might help.
That's a good idea, okay.
Mr. Pratt?
I was just going to ask for some flyers, I'll put them up at the college.
That'd be great, yeah. And we have done press releases, you know, really all across the state, and we'll hit them again as the event draws near.
Okay.
So we really are trying to get the word out as much as possible.
And we've got one in the window at the chamber and one on the bulletin board, so.
Great.
People are really interested, they're looking at.
Yeah, it'll be a great event, it'll be fun.
I think it will be, you'll be surprised at how well it will go over.
I sincerely hope that that's true. I have a lot of faith in Ryan, I don't know if he has the same faith in me, but it'll be fun, we know that much.
We have such a wonderful Parks and Recreation Department with so much great experience in these events, so I'm sure he'll do a great job of assisting you.
Great.
All right.
Anything else?
All right.
That's it, all right, thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to switch a couple of items, okay, so what we're going to have is, we're going to have, I'm going to put the certificates of appreciation and call Morgan Scott out to give this presentation, I'm going to switch that up, and the reason being is that we have Dr. Paul Ty here to talk about the Mingus Union High School capital override election, but I goofed up and I didn't get Cottonwood Oak Creek School District on, I mean, I didn't, it went through another office, but, so Barb will present it, the call to the public, and we'll just get that taken care of, and so you'll end up being together after all if I take this next item. So Morgan's going to share a little bit with the council and the public on the dog park. As you will recall, back when we did our budget, the dog park requested shades, and the council was, we just didn't have a whole lot of, any extra dollars, and so we asked that the dog park users collaborate with us and work on that, and in that process, Jason Valencia, who is my intern, and he's here tonight, Jason, and his friend, Jolene Finn, they're both here tonight, and Jason did a lot of work, he even worked through Mary Anne's office to find a used mailbox, and he created a poll or a, what, survey, thank you, he created a survey for the dog park users, and he collaborated with Mary Anne on that, because at the time, she was looking at maybe trying to write a grant that would include veterans, so he did a survey, and he got that mailbox down there, and tallied all the surveys, and he's been doing a lot of work on it, he made posters, and so we had a meeting, and we talked to the dog park users, who came up with some of their own ideas, and the city manager assigned Morgan Scott to attend the meeting, and from there, Morgan's been doing a whole lot of work on this issue, and we'll let Morgan describe what he's been doing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I apologize for jumping out at you, I wasn't quite ready for my spot on the agenda, I apologize for that.
I fooled you, right?
That's all right. Many of you remember, the dog park is an incredibly popular facility, it's been voted as one of the best dog parks in the state of Arizona, and what makes it incredibly unique is the community backing behind it, the community got together and raised over thirty thousand dollars to construct the dog park, which is pretty unique for the community to do that. A lot of, you know, the council, you know, a lot of groups come together and they want the city to go build something, but not a lot of financial behind it, but that was a really unique group to get together and raise that much money to put this together. That group, although many of it is not as active as they once were, they're still very much users of the dog park, they love it, they enjoy it, and the dog park users are not afraid to raise money when necessary, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit tonight, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but one of the biggest concerns that was brought to us was the lack of shade at that meeting, that was probably the majority of the time was spent on the lack of shade. So we did a little bit of research, and just what is the most, the economic shade structure we can construct, we found one for about eight hundred dollars, which was convenient because the group that had raised the thirty thousand dollars for the dog park had eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars left over in their fund, so they donated that, they turned that over to Rudy, we took that, got the shade structure from Home Depot, it was actually delivered today conveniently, it's not supposed to be here till the 24th, but was delivered today, so we'll probably start construction on that middle to late next week, we're kind of getting ready for the storms, that's the only reason we're not in.
You're not putting up dog shades.
Not putting it up right now, but it will be up definitely by the end of this month. There was about twenty, twenty-two dollars left over, I think, and the second thing the group is worried about is where you come in and out all the time, the grass is worn out, it's a constant mud issue, and also underneath the shade structure, it's probably going to be a mud issue, so we're probably going to end up putting pavers, so not only has the dog user group done that initial fundraising, they've gone back and raised another, I think, two hundred and sixty dollars, so we're going to purchase some pavers, and actually, it was Rudy's idea to come up with, the next thing we're going to approach them with is help a little help with the installation, some people don't have the financials to donate, but they would be asking if they want to donate labor in kind to help install the pavers. So those are the two main issues, there's a whole list of other things here that I can run through really quickly, I don't want to, if you're in a hurry, I know.
Well, if you would run through them, that would be great, I would like you to, because there were some requests at the meeting that we weren't able to be able to meet, and I want to be sure the public understands that we did address those, all of them, and so that's why I would like you to go ahead and run through those.
Absolutely, no problem. The first was the ants, there's a, or there was quite a few ants at the dog park, and there was some concern about how to eradicate them without interfering with the dogs, so what we did is we found a relatively safe ant repellent, and we surrounded them the outside of the dog park, which is supposed to work within three hundred feet of wherever you put it. it. So that's done away with the majority of the ants, I don't think we're ever going to completely do away with all of them. But that was the first issue they brought up. The second is the flying insects, they were all worried about the number of flying insects at the dog park. And the only way to deal with them is to spray and spray everything, and that was a kind of controversial issue among the group. Some felt that that was necessary, some felt that they didn't want their dogs around that. After a lot of discussion and deliberation, we kind of decided not to spray, and that's just something that we can't deal with, we're willing to risk the, what might happen to the dogs. Unfortunately, we weren't able to address that concern, but it was also a contentious issue.
And I did make a suggestion to the lady that was being bit by insects to maybe use some insect repellent or something, which it seems like other members of the group also agreed that, you know, just taking care of it personally would be better than spraying the whole park with insecticide, so...
The next couple of issues all kind of dealt with how the dogs interact with each other, you've got some dogs who are a little more aggressive and some owners who are not obeying all leash laws. So the first one is how they all interact. For those of you who haven't been to the dog park in a while, you go into, you go into the first gate and you're not immediately in the dog park, you're kind of in an enclosed area, so you know you can get to any of the other areas. That enclosed area is where the most encounters, I guess, happen and interactions between dogs. So we've gone ahead and this will be happening in the next couple of weeks, is there will be additional gates on both the smaller areas, so that maybe more aggressive dogs can get in somewhere else, or get around and not have to go through that area. Let's see where we're at. Oh, apparently on the old, on the old dog park, there was a sign indicating leash laws, and apparently that disappeared when the dog park was rearranged, that's been reordered and reinstalled, letting dog owners know that between their vehicle and the inside of the dog park, they have to have their dog on the leash the whole time, that was a little bit of a contentious area. They also wanted the number for animal control and maintenance posted, that way anybody can call anytime for either an animal control issue or a maintenance issue. We've posted three signs, we've got a couple spares, so taking care of that. Also, the latch at the small dog park area apparently was not working. And I think that's another thing the sign will help us with, I know sometimes the users don't know who to call. This way they can call Public Works right away, we can get that taken care of, because we were unaware that the latch was not working. So that was taken care of right away. We already discussed pavers in the muddy areas. Oh, one request was made was to unlock the older, the older gate at the eastern portion near, I believe it's Miss, I don't remember the citizen's name, I apologize, but Miss Allen, I think. And you may remember that was a little bit of a contentious issue here a few weeks ago, a few months ago now. So we recommended that we not reopen that gate, because that was a noise issue, it was generating more people closer to the residential area. So again, that was something that we didn't go with what the group necessarily wanted, but we did listen to them and we did install the additional gates at the other end of the park. They also, in addition to that, they wanted the enclosure put back in on the east end of the park, the old area. And again, we're recommending that council not move forward with that. Oh, a claim was made that people were speeding incredibly fast, going in their estimate 30 to 40 miles an hour towards the community garden, so Chief Fanning was really helpful in getting a radar detector up on that road almost immediately. So we haven't had any complaints since then. We already talked about the shade, and the first complaint was that the trees are not large enough, so they may actually do some more fundraising to put in more trees. And if they purchase the trees, if it's okay with city council, we will definitely take care of installing them and extending irrigation to them. Finally, the last thing we need to do is some members were worried about, after we installed the shade structure, having a hard object that dogs can run into, so we'll work on some kind of a padding or something to allow dogs to either see it or not be heard as much. So not quite sure what that is yet, we're still brainstorming, but we'll figure that out as we move forward with the shade structure. Those are the items that we went through with the group, and we'll continue to, well, we also have a decent relationship with the users now, they've got our emails, phone numbers, and we routinely get calls, especially since putting up those signs, so...
Great, so I want to just personally thank you on behalf of the city council for all that you've done, you've been working really hard on this issue on behalf of the citizens. I also wanted to mention that some of the dog park users have raised $250 to buy pavers?
That's correct.
Okay. And then Home Depot, okay, so Nancy, who is one of the members, and I don't know her last name, but Nancy's been working with you...
Astro, I believe.
Okay. She's been working with you, and Home Depot, so she's, she had me write a letter to Home Depot, I guess that's what Home Depot requested, was for me to write a letter to them requesting their assistance. So from the Cottonwood Riverfront Dog Park Group, the original group, we got the $877 for the shade in the small dog park, but she is working with Home Depot to try to get a donation of some more shade for the larger dog park area. So we'll see what happens. So far, we haven't had to come back to council, and so we really appreciate all the citizens and all the work they've done to make it a better, a better place. And there are people that have said that they've moved here because of the dog park, there are people, there are people who travel here, who have said they travel here because of the dog park. And so, you know, the dog park is definitely something that is appreciated in our community. So that's all I have anymore from you. Thank you very much for your work. Any questions or comments?
I got a comment, you know, when I got elected, the very first person that walked in the door here was former Mayor Don Haun, and he said, "We need some shade structures down at the dog park," and that's been an item we've discussed several times, and I really appreciate the staff jumping on that and getting it, getting it done, accomplished. I'm anxious to see how it changes the use of the park, but I do appreciate you guys listening to the public and doing what you can to satisfy their wishes.
No problem.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next, oh, thank you, that's the whole, the whole purpose, thank you very much. So the original group was called the Cottonwood Riverfront Dog Park. Go ahead.
Users, I don't know.
Users, okay. And we have four people that we want to issue a certificate of appreciation to from the Cottonwood City Council. They weren't able to be here tonight, but they're the ones who, out of the goodness of their hearts, raised the $30,000 originally for the dog park to be created. And boy, we all remember how hard they worked. And they are the ones that had the $877 stuck away, and Morrell McHale just happened to come to one of the mayor's coffee talk meetings and heard about it, and she's, she kind of like, thought, well, maybe this is the time to spend that money. So first of all, the council wants to recognize Jody Wheeler for her tireless efforts to make the Cottonwood Dog Park a reality. Volunteers are the heart of the community, the mayor and city council thank you for your civic generosity. So this one will be sent to Jody Wheeler. We also have Morrell McHale, and we appreciate her tireless efforts to make the Cottonwood Dog Park a reality, and she'll be receiving this certificate. Pat Mastorus is also someone who worked very hard along with the group to fundraise. And Willie Allen is being recognized tonight also for her work that she did. And so we just all want to thank these four ladies and so many other people in the community who worked together, but thank you for the $877, we appreciate you all. Okay, moving on to the next item is Mingus Union High School's capital override election, and we have Dr. Paul Ty with us this evening.
Good evening and thank you, it's a pleasure to be here this evening and appreciate your time, and we'll be pretty brief here. I put some flyers, it's trifolds, hopefully everyone has one. And just want to share some information about an upcoming election item. In the center of the trifold, there's a table, so I'd like to just draw that to your attention to kind of explain some of the rationale between, behind the call to the election by the Mingus Governing Board. So as you can see there from our budget figures, that we're currently operating at a million dollars less per year than we did in 2008 with the same number of kids. And so, you know, about half of that is in operations, so we call it MNO, Maintenance and Operations. That's our operating budget, and about 85% of that is salary and benefits. We basically pay teachers to teach and support staff to support those operations. The other half of those cuts was in what we call capital. So capital is meant to buy things. So for example, a piece of paper or pencil would be a supply, so that's Maintenance and Operations. But a computer, a desk, a chair, any furnishing, school buses, equipment, technology, things that you'd buy would be considered capital. So last year, you may recall, doesn't even seem like a year, was before you're talking about a Maintenance and Operations override renewal, that was for the operational side of the house. And the funds don't co-mingle, they're compartmentalized and restricted in use. So the governing board deliberated quite a bit a few months ago and determined that it really felt it was necessary to ask the local taxpayers to backfill about half of the cuts that we've received from the legislature. So this is in the form of what's called a district additional assistance override. It used to be a capital override, I'll still call it a capital override because it's for capital items only. The legislature renamed it a couple of years ago, and I think it may have been politically motivated to make it sound like they were giving districts additional money. There is actually a line item on our budget that we have to show the allocation because it was a voter mandate, but then the next line below it shows the reduction. So it's still part of our budget, but it's unfunded, and it's been unfunded now for six, six years. The cumulative effect is now over $3 million. So if you think about it like a car, for example, you can say, "Well, my budget isn't good right now, I can't afford to buy a new car." So you keep replacing things and putting money into it. Sooner or later, the piece of equipment, I'll pass it's used for life, and you got to buy a new car. Well, when you start doing that with everything, from textbooks to computers that now don't run the software the kids need, to furnishings, our buses, our equipment, it's kind of the perfect storm is brewing. And so the board, you know, didn't take it lightly to ask the taxpayers for additional support, but felt it really needed to. So that's why they called for the election. And it would raise a little over half a million dollars a year for seven years, and then it would stop. So it's a fixed term, it's very similar to the Maintenance and Operations override, but it, it would end after seven years, and hopefully by then we would get some restoration of funding. The types of things that were identified came from students and staff, and was reviewed by a committee of the governing board, and so those are listed in the middle above that table, the types of things. And I had a parent affirm this, she said, "You know, I know you really need this because I've seen the condition of my kids' textbooks." And we brought kids in over the summer to use a lot of tape, to tape the books to try to hold them together. And so they're, they're in sad shape. The custodians were doing the deep clean this summer, and so I was walking down the hallways of the campus, and all the furnishings, you know, kids' desks are out in the hallways, I started looking at them, and the laminate tops are cracked and chipped, making, you know, a bad riding surface. The plastic chairs, you know, the molded plastic ones were cracked, so there's safety there with kids getting pinched by the chairs. And then there were broken welds, our maintenance staff was rewelding a lot of the desks, but we just haven't had the funds to replace that kind of stuff, and it's starting to show. Our bus fleet, we borrowed money a year ago, a little over a year ago to buy five buses, they were used buses. So one of our newest buses has a blown motor now, and, you know, it's a $20,000 repair. And, you know, so even with newer buses, that, that kind of problem exists. Most of our fleet is in the 25, 20 to 25-year age range and have, you know, 150, 250,000-mile range. So they're well maintained, but they're tired, and it's just accumulation of all those things that the override would fund. The typical household of $100,000 valuation would be about $1.92 a month. And again, after seven years, it would, it would cease unless renewed. So I would be happy to answer questions, and also kind of compare this with, the Cottonwood Oak Creek District has similar needs, capital needs, but they're going for a bond election, which is more like a mortgage. So this is a short-term tax increase, they're borrowing money on a longer term like a mortgage. And so they're very similar, we have a lot of similar needs, although they have some more structural needs. I believe Mr. Rand will be able to comment on that in the public comment.
So, questions, Mr. Elinsky?
You mentioned about the restoration of funds from the legislature, can you talk a little bit more about that and what you see coming down the pike?
Sure, I, you know, I'll try to be brief, because I could talk a long time about that, and some of it's speculation, but I can describe some of the things you may have seen in the paper recently, which is with some of the litigation. So a consortium of school districts and organizations that support schools have sued the state. The case is Cave Creek versus Ducey, so Cave Creek Unified was one of the plaintiffs, and have been successful at every level. So their suit was that the Proposition 301 that the voters passed in 1999 required the legislature to provide inflationary increases to the base level support to schools at the rate of either 2% per year or inflation, whichever's lower. Well, since 2008, the legislature has not funded that, and the lawsuit was seeking that that in fact be funded. The legislature appealed to every level, right up to the Supreme Court, and their basis was that they didn't feel that the voters could tell the legislature how to allocate money. And it's a little counterintuitive, but the Supreme Court said, "No, that's hogwash, you have to in fact follow the voter initiative." So then the next and most recently publicized court decision was at the Superior Court level, where the question of what does that look like, what does that mean, there's a back payment question about those six years where it wasn't funded, so currently the base level support should be about 7% higher than it is. So there's a question of, well, what about all those years of unfunded? That's about $1.3 billion statewide to back pay that. The other question is, well, what about current year? And so that would be raising the base level support by 7% this fiscal year. So that, the Superior Court judge said, "Yes, you have to back pay, and yes, you have to make an immediate increase." So the governor did speak and say that they will appeal, so it's likely headed to the Supreme Court. And there's some cautious optimism that the plaintiffs will again prevail. You know, however, it's not certain how long that'll take, it'll probably be sometime during the legislative session, so maybe, you know, late winter, early spring. And then, you know, what that looks like, sometimes, as has happened in the past, the legislature says, "Fine, we'll, we'll allocate that inflationary increase, but we're going to take it from somewhere else." And so the net effect is zeroed out, and is less impact on the general fund for the state. So, you know, there's a lot of questions that are still unanswered. It is probably important to point out, there was an offer for a settlement, the plaintiffs offered that, let's just forget about that back payment, the $1.3 billion, and let's just focus on the current year and move forward. And the offer was not, and has not yet been acknowledged, so there was not even discussion about it, but I believe, I've been told, the offer's still on the table, and there's interest in, you know, moving forward and just trying to deal with present day and going forward. So, you know, there's opportunity for additional funding that just would have been inflationary. So if you think about, you know, salaries have been frozen, our expenses, you know, fuel and everything costs more, and the funding is set by the state, like our board, governing boards don't have the authority to levy a tax, so our budget is set by a formula from the legislature. So they don't have the opportunity to increase that. The only mechanisms are to go forward with override elections and bond elections, which is to ask local taxpayers to kick in more than the state does.
I was going to ask too, if, even if you were to have, have that 7% inflationary increase, would you still, you'd probably still need this, I would think?
Absolutely. So that's on the operational side of the house, and so back to the MNO dollars, and that 7% of the base level support, which is roughly $3,300, will help, I mean, everything will help, absolutely. But it won't address our capital needs, which is really the basis for both elections. It is focusing on the things, not the operations.
And then you think about that, I mean, it sounds like a lot of money, it's three, is it 340 million that you were...
Sorry, it's 317, I meant to mention that as well. So the current year, if we increased for the full year, the full fiscal year, the increase statewide of that 7% would be roughly $370 million. There's also talk that, you know, maybe if it happened in the spring, it would be a prorated increase for the last quarter of the fiscal year to soften the blow to the general fund, so a lot of speculation.
So the 317 million, how many school districts are there in Arizona?
Roughly 200 and... Roughly 243 or 267.
So those, all of those districts would have to divide up that, and they would each get a piece of the pie based on formulas and that, so...
Yeah, there's roughly a million kids, and so everything is, you know, formulas driven by a million, you know, kids. It's divided out on a per pupil basis.
So, I mean, not a whole lot would be coming to Cottonwood and the Verde Valley, no matter how you slice it.
That's correct.
And then I also, just on the political side of things, which they can't talk about, but I can, you know, it's, even though the court gives an order, there have been issues in the past where the legislature still ignored it. And they could do that in this case, so they could get $0, you know. So we really can't count those eggs, because we don't know if they're gonna hatch.
An example of that actually is the capital allocation. That was from a voter mandate, students' first money, and so that's why it has to appear in our budget. And then there's a line item reduction I mentioned about earlier. So, you know, that could be another, you know, court case down the road.
So when you think about, you know, you think about education, you know, you're really talking about economic development. You're talking about jobs, and, you know, if you are an older person and you receive Social Security, you might think that, "Oh, I don't have any kids. I'm not gonna vote for that." But when you think about it, when we were young, some of us, you still are, and a few of you are, still young, but in my age group, when I worked, I was helping six people on Social Security. So, well, no, there were six workers to help one Social Security check. Sorry, get this right. So now that I'm getting to the age to be on Social Security, you're having only two. And so, you know, for like your children, that's gonna be a big burden. So, you know, we want our kids to be as educated as possible for many reasons, you know, but providing jobs and higher-paying jobs, it all fits into economic development. Education is economic development, so... Also, the election is November 4th.
That's correct.
And I was just looking on the county's website, trying to figure out when the last day to register was.
October 6.
October 6 is the last day that you can register to vote. And you can register to vote on the county's website, I believe, and that is a very simple yavapai.us to get any kind of election information that you might wish to have. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, and the state of Arizona may not rank very high in the country for education for our children, but in watching the generations that I've seen go through our school district here in Cottonwood and the Verde Valley, Mingus, Cottonwood, Oak Creek, and Mountain View, these kids are getting one bang for their buck. Their education is exemplary. I'm watching how they're monitoring the children in the school. I don't know how the teachers actually do it and are able to teach the kids, but they're monitoring them. They're dealing with special needs for some of these children that might have dyslexia and stuff like that, that years and years ago just weren't, they were sort of, they didn't have time for that either, but now they're taking the time. And these kids are really, they're getting one heck of an education, going from kindergarten or preschool even, all the way through Mingus. So it's really important that we, I'm on a soapbox, I guess, but we really need to take care of the children because it is economic development, and people coming into our community want an educated workforce. And without the kids going through the school and getting this great education that they're getting here, they don't have an educated workforce. So it's all, and there, these people that are going through the schools are also becoming nurses and doctors and coming back and taking care of us older folks. So it's all just one big cycle, so we need to take care of our children.
Mr. Garrison?
I was gonna wait till after Ms. Yurin made her presentation, but...
Well, she's gonna be speaking at the Call to the Public, so we're not gonna be able to comment. So go right ahead.
The, the, good point. You know, I've had the pleasure of serving on both of these boards for a long time, and it's just amazing what these groups of people have to do with the money that's allotted to them. It's very much like the city, you know, people see these big budget numbers and say, "Oh, you know, you got 10 million, 11 million, 13 million, 20 million. You know, what are you doing with all that money?" Well, they forget, in the case of school districts, 84 to 87% of that money goes to salaries and benefits. At the end of the day, you have 13% or so to pay for the busing, pay for your fuel, pay for your electric bill, pay for your water bill that increases, pay for paper and books and carpet and painting lockers and replacing doors, and then refinishing gym floors that get rain and water and whatnot and damage. At the end of the day, you have a whole lot of facility to take care of and really no money to do it. And people just don't understand that, I mean, the city's in the same boat. You know, we keep, people keep coming and saying, "Give us some money." And we're already obligated with all our bonding and all our funding and all of our staff. It doesn't leave very much at the end of the day, and it truly is a momentous amount of work that you all do to continue to provide what has turned out to be a great educational opportunity for the children of the Verde Valley. And they should be very happy with that. And I think the public genuinely supports education. Nobody likes seeing taxes and things go up on their property bills, but at the end of the day, you've done a stellar job with providing that educational opportunity for the children, and you should receive their support, and I hope you will.
Thank you.
And you think about it, I mean, if we're trying to recruit doctors for our hospitals and nurses and others in our community, and what do you think the first thing they, if they have a family, what do you think the first thing they look at is?
Recreational opportunities.
Recreational opportunities. I would say they look for education. How well are our schools doing? And they're going to come here if they feel confident that their children are receiving a good education. What are we, we're 48th in the nation for per pupil funding, is that...
I think we're last now, aren't we?
Yeah, there, different measures are used, and each year it ranks between 48th and 50th. And it hasn't always been that way. You know, back in 1970, we were in the middle of the pack.
And you talk about 87% of a budget going to teachers' salaries, but we read every day about how low the salaries are for teachers compared to the education that they must have to teach our children. You know, they're not rolling in the bucks when they teach. They could, they could make a lot more money doing almost anything else, but they teach because they're committed to kids, they love kids, they wanna make a difference in children's lives and...
We're blessed with some outstanding teachers and support staff in the community. And, you know, collectively, the school districts are, you know, one of the largest employers, and so a lot of those teachers live in town, and, you know, the money stays in town. So it's, it's a support economic though.
I guess to wrap up, you wanna share a little bit about your accomplishments? You were just recognized nationwide?
That's correct. And I do have some information on the flyer, just some Did You Know stuff. The thing that I'm proud of, I guess, on the backside, recently, U.S. News and World Report did its ranking, and they, to make a long story short, they start with all the high schools in the country and narrow it down. So they started with like 30-something thousand high schools, narrowed it down to 19,000, based on various measures, not just like test scores, but they look at how subgroups compare to average. So if your high-needs populations, like English learners, special ed, other subgroups, minorities, how they do compared to the average kids, the smaller those gaps, the more points you get. Your graduation rates and dropout rates, they put all that together, and they don't reveal everything because they don't want people trying to manipulate it, but we're, we received a bronze award, which puts us in the top 27% of all high schools in the U.S. And, you know, that's right here in Cottonwood.
That's awesome. That's great.
Our graduating seniors, you know, when I first came, and I don't mean to take too much time, but last year, when I first came, you know, one of the questions I asked was, "Well, how much, you know, in scholarships did our graduating seniors get?" And the answer was $1.8 million. And I was like, "Wow, that's a lot for 300 seniors graduating." So this year, of course, I have to ask the same question again, and it was $2.3 million. Well, that's over a third of our operating budget. And, you know, per pupil, I mean, we have kids that are going on being very successful, and, you know, those scholarship dollars are earned. Our kids are great, and, you know, academics, athletics, leadership, they have earned that, but it's a really, to me, it's a very impressive figure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from any other council members? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight and your ongoing support. It's much appreciated.
Absolutely. So the next item is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. So if you would like to come up, we have Superintendent Barbara Yurin, who was asked to speak tonight on the upcoming bond...
Capital bond, yes.
Capital bond election, and the council cannot ask questions or make comments, but we can learn from the presentation that she'll be sharing.
I think this is kind of nice. You've limited me to five minutes, and I don't have to answer any questions. It's a great deal.
Couldn't ask for more, right?
And I wanna thank Paul for taking care of a lot of the details, because you'll find a lot of similarities. And it is a pipeline. You have a pipeline right here. This young man back here, Jason, nice to see you, went through our school system, so you can see that it continues on. So very similar to what you heard from Dr. Thai and the capital needs that Mingus Union High School has, Cottonwood Oak Creek School District has those same needs. In addition, Cottonwood Oak Creek School District has some very severe building needs. We have five schools and two other building facilities, three other building facilities that we take care of. When we look at our budget, we've seen our budget decrease by 84% in that area that takes care of capital needs, from $1.2 million to $220,000 each year. $220,000 to take care of all five facilities, 2,100 children's needs, buses, student supplies, desks, carpets, all of those things, and maintain the buildings. One thing I think is real important to bring to your attention, or actually a couple of things. First of all, I've worked in the district for a number of years, and I've worked under some great boards, and our boards have been very, very conservative. They've been conservative in the sense that those dollars, they understand that these buildings belong to this community. They do not belong to us, they belong to the community. When you drive by at night, when I was coming down here, our parking lots are full right now because we have city activities going on at our sites. Our buildings, we have a traffic school going on in the district office right now. So the buildings are constantly used throughout Cottonwood and Oak Creek on community needs. Our first and foremost responsibility is the students that we serve and the safety of those children. So this board looked at and asked us to look at the facility's needs. We had SEDEXCO do a comprehensive analysis of all of our sites and came back to us with a priority list of what our needs were. We broke that into four areas, and we're calling it the best: the buildings, the efficiencies, the safety, and the technology. So in our buildings, what you'll see is years of wear. We've not had a capital bond since 1995. We've been debt-free since 2009. One of the great things about this community is when you drive by Mingus Union High School right now, you see a beautiful community, a beautiful school. If you'll remember, it was about six years ago, seven years ago, that that school needed some serious work. It had not had any dollars put into its facilities in years, and it was showing. So the community stood up and supported that capital bond at Mingus Union High School about six years ago. And today, we can drive by, be proud of the building we see, and also be proud to know that we rank in the top 27% of the schools in the nation. So we take great pride in that. Cottonwood Oak Creek School District has not had those capital funds to invest into the buildings that we have. So whereas we have maintained our buildings, and we've put our dollars into those buildings to maintain them for the school's safety and for our children and for the community, the years of that home are starting to wear and tear. Tim came and took care of one of my homes because it was wearing and tearing, and that's what happens after the years. So that's what the governing board is looking at, and the governing board is asking the community to support a $15 million capital bond. They could have asked for around $20 million, 10% of our assessed value, but based upon the priorities, they stuck with those priorities and making sure that we were addressing the buildings, efficiencies, the safety, and the technology. For the average homeowner of about $114,000 home, it's about $6.5 and 95 cents. If you take that for a year, that's about $71. If you think about that for the 20-year mortgage that Paul was talking about, that's about $1,428. It's a pretty good deal. I can't say it's a pretty good deal for your money. That's about what it would cost. So we are going to be doing some tours of our campuses for the public to see what some of those needs are and to ask the people that are on-site to, tell them about those needs. So I think Mr. Snyder's passed some of those dates out, and that will be in the newspaper. We have our campuses open for the public to come and see at any time, to see the great things that are happening in the classroom. These tours will actually be set aside to show the capital needs of the district. I think I hit my five minutes, and I thank you that I don't have to answer any questions. This is great, loving it. And, but you can certainly call me, and I'll be happy to spend any time that you need with you individually or as a group, or if you'd like us to come and speak to you any other time, we should be happy to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council members. We appreciate your comments. Okay, moving on, is there anyone else who would like to speak to the Call to the Public? If not, we'll close the floor to the public. Approval of minutes of the special meeting of August 26, 2014.
I move we approve the minutes. Second.
Mr. Ilinski made the motion. Mr. Garrison seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is authorizing the purchase of a logging voice recorder for the Emergency Services Communication Center. Is there anyone from council who would like to pull that item for discussion? Is there anyone from members of the public who would like to pull the item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Mr. Pratt made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is new liquor license applications for a beer and wine store and sampling privileges for Deborah D. Garrison, owner of a small batch wine and spirits located at 1044 North Main Street.
I would like to proclaim a conflict.
Okay. Mr. Garrison is claiming a conflict on this item? Any discussion on this item?
Nope.
Nope. And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the beer and wine store and sampling privileges, liquor license applications for Deborah Garrison, owner of small batch wine and spirits located at 1044 North Main Street.
Second. Mr. Pratt made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number two is design selection for the sidewalk along Mickelson Parkway. And we have Morgan Scott, I believe, to explain that item. We know how hard you're working back there.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, the councils, one of the council's high priorities is new sidewalks and maintenance of sidewalks in the city of Cottonwood. And every year, the council sets aside about $80,000 to either extend sidewalks where we don't have any or repair old sidewalks. This year, I think it was... This year, I think it was a few months ago, we brought to council a couple of high priorities in which the council considered the highest priority, and you directed us to consider Mickelson Parkway between the rec center and what is Cottonwood Village. I believe the main driver behind that, correct me if I'm wrong, was residents in the Cottonwood Village and the nearby senior center, getting to the newly constructed rec center, library, that really nice campus now the city has. So, we wanted to find a way to get them there. There are two obvious routes. The first is the route along Mickelson Parkway, just opposite of the fire training center, which is now the, I'm sorry, not the fire training center, the old fire building, which is now the teen center. As the council knows, there's a row of juniper trees, very nice mature juniper trees there. As you may not know, there's two twenty-four-inch underground storm drain pipes that flow right behind the curb. In fact, there's an area where they're kind of exposed right now. That is the first route, to go right there, right on top of those pipes, get those pipes out of there, put in the channel, make it some kind of combined sidewalk and drainage channel, which would obviously be very expensive and a little bit of a liability and risk hazard, but that is the first route. The second route is actually to start at the south end and allow people from Cottonwood Village and the nearby senior center to access through their own parking lot, the sidewalk at the south end, and then extend the sidewalk again to the sidewalks that go all the way to the library, the rec center. The first route would cost in excess of about two hundred thousand dollars. The second route, and again, the biggest reason for that is the drainage structures are going to have to be not only removed but replaced. The second route would cost approximately an estimated one hundred and ten thousand dollars. And we wanted to bring this to council to see, what did you have in mind when you directed and you said this is, this was your top priority?
Council members, Mr. Garrison?
Before we start on this, I want to commend the staff for jumping on the sidewalk down here on Penal and Main. That was something we had discussed when we were trying to figure out, you know, where to put our sidewalk funds, and you've done just a beautiful job of fixing what was really a blight in that area, and it's really nice to see how well you figured out how to deal with the situation that didn't look like it was going to be easily fixed. And anyway, you've done a beautiful job on that. I appreciate you guys taking the time and effort to do that. Next, the question I've got on this project specifically is, has anybody talked to Cottonwood Village, and do they have any issues with the public using their parking lot as a, you know, as a throughway? And is there any discussion on maybe being able to put some lane markers or something through there so people actually understand that's kind of the route that would tie back into the sidewalks, or?
We haven't talked to Cottonwood Village since the initial, I think it was a coffee talk that they brought this item to our attention. That was the initial talk with them. We would need to talk to a private property owner. It actually is, it's not on Cottonwood Village property. It would be on the neighboring property to the south, but they've worked well with the city in the past. We would like to discuss with them before we went to construction on either project. So, are you thinking signs perhaps, or directing?
No, I was just thinking, you know, follow the Illawry Road, you know, just two lane markers that kind of tell you this is a path, and, you know, I've seen it done in other cities, it's kind of like a crosswalk, you know, just, it kind of gives people the understanding this is kind of where you go to get from point A to point B, which is, you know, Mingus Avenue down to, you know, that area which would get back out. Because I think that was one of the concerns we had when we talked about this way back was, you really hate to see, get rid of all those trees. It takes so long to have them grown, and it's a really nice part of that down there. It shades the park from, the building shades the building from the park and creates that level of separation, and it's, it would just really be terrible to see all those have to come down and create a big expanse of pavement and concrete. So, I like this idea. I'm just more concerned if they would have any issues with, you know, the use of their parking facility as a right-of-way.
And it's not actually a city right-of-way right now? I mean, would it be possible that they would, after you discussed it with them, that they might make it a right-of-way?
Well, we may not need it. We may just need a small sidewalk easement. Were you thinking we needed the right-of-way, or?
Well, this little piece of sidewalk that comes there, is that on private property, or is that?
Yeah.
The little blue line?
Yes.
Is that what you were going to ask, or?
No.
Okay, so, okay.
Actually, we've tried to keep it off of Cottonwood Village's property. The reason is Cottonwood Village is a publicly traded company. It's very difficult to work with, or at least get a hold of. The property owner to the south is a sole proprietorship. They don't live in Cottonwood, but much easier to at least talk to, so.
Okay. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, again, it seems to me Cottonwood Village is fine with it, and that's what, it seems the direction we should take is go find out if they are fine with it. That one would be preferable. You don't want to take down the trees. You don't want to have to deal with those storm drains. So, it seems to me we ought to give you a direction to go talk to Cottonwood Village and see how they feel about it.
Okay, and then we are talking about the other side of the street, past the library, past the county's health department, and we're talking about that side too, right?
That's correct. This would actually extend all the way to Sixth Street on the library side of the street.
And that would be wonderful to get that piece, a sidewalk there.
And that is that red line then?
Right.
We're talking about, okay.
Right.
Looks good to me.
So, can I ask?
Yes. Mr. Elinsky?
So, from Mingus, I just can't picture it in my head right now, but from Mingus, if you're turning on Mickelson Parkway, there's going to be a sidewalk on the left. There will not be one on the right where those trees are.
If you, yes, you're correct. If you are, if you're on Mingus Avenue and you turn down Mickelson Parkway, currently on your left, there is a sidewalk, which needs to be repaired. And the only reason it's waiting for repair is till lift station number four is complete, because we're going to bust up any sidewalk put in there. But that'll be part of lift station number four is to repair that sidewalk. So, yes, there's already sidewalk on the left side of the road. And what we're talking about is the possibility of putting it on the right side of the road. And that's the first option, the section option, is to not start it till the end of those pipes. Yes, sir.
Because on the right, it's been a while since I've, I just can't picture, but on the right side, it seems like there is a social trail already, isn't there? So, I'm just wondering, is it not possible to do like a paver type of sidewalk along there that would wrap those trees, so I don't have to cut the trees down, but it would just circle the trees, just to allow folks?
Maybe.
Because they're going to walk there one way or the other, but.
It may be difficult to make it ADA. Now, is the sidewalk, is it, do you think the social trail is going parallel to the street, or you think they're cutting across the street? Because maybe another option is to put a crosswalk in there, just get them down to the road level and put a crosswalk across the other side, or do you think they're walking parallel to the street?
I, again, I really can't picture it. I mean, I know that they walk along there, but I, I should have, you know, in fairness, I should have gone and taken them closer.
You're kind of in the road. When you're, when you're walking down through there, you're pushed out into the edge of the road, and the traffic comes whizzing along through there. It's not real safe. And I think in order to do the width that the city needs, I think you'd really be even there having to cut those trees way back or get rid of them altogether.
My concern only is that folks that are walking, you know, writing their byes sickle and choose to be on the sidewalk in that area are still not going to have a sidewalk, and they're really not going to know to cut through private property to access the sidewalk that will come into that parking lot. You know, that's my only concern, is that there won't be a sidewalk there where those trees are. Naturally, people would expect there to be.
There's probably a street view right along there you can pull up.
That's obvious.
I know, I do know that down near the south end, there is a social trail that kind of cuts through, that sort of drops down from those, from that facility down to the street. Historically, I'm not sure about how much of one there is along. We'll tell you in a second.
Certainly wouldn't want to lose the trees, you know. I just thought if there was another solution, you know, with some pavers or to get some hard surface for folks to walk on.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So, this is the left side of the road, which is the Ramones today, the Garris Park. This area here is where option number two would start continuing. I think this area right here is the area we're discussing. Is that correct?
So, if you didn't, if you just put like a, if you didn't put a six-foot sidewalk there, if you put a five or even a four, would you be able to do that without killing the trees?
We can definitely do it. One of the difficulties, as you can see in this picture, is the underground storm drains. So, that's what's going to have to be replaced and/or make this project significantly more expensive. What would have to happen is either retaining wall back of the curb here to hold up the sidewalk above the existing storm drains, or the storm drains ripped out and moved. The sidewalk would actually be more of a box channel that doubles as a drainage feature when it's wet, but also sidewalk. Both of those are very expensive, but definitely doable.
So, we'd have to save our eighty thousand for three years? Or find other funds? Hmm? The floods? Flood funds? Would we be eligible for flood funds for that sidewalk?
I know we've used up four hundred thousand dollars over the next two years for the mass drainage study.
And how much have we donated in the past? I know you don't know that, but I always have to be smart and have a comeback on that. A smart alec.
I just, I feel like it's important to have a sidewalk on that side of the street. We get a lot of foot traffic through there, and I just, people are going to be using that anyway, but it's dangerous to use it as it is right now, so.
Would you be willing to, would you require it to be six feet, or would you be willing to reduce the, or do you want to just go with the two-hundred-and-some-thousand and make it six feet?
Well, I think, I think the plan that you've suggested is a good, is a good plan. I mean, it's at least a starting point. We get sidewalks in that area, you know, especially for the Cottonwood Village folks to use. But I think in the, in the future, we're still going to need to tie into that sidewalk and make it go all the way out to Mingus.
I agree.
But there's nothing exclusive with your plan right now that would.
That's true. The only, it would be a portion of it that could be extended on later. That's very true.
So, could we just kind of put that in the hopper for asking for flood funds for that piece in the future when our time, it's our turn again to get them?
We can definitely request it, yes.
Yes, Mr. Garrison?
Do we have any idea in, where is it? There we go. In, where our property line lies between here and the other side? I mean, what the, how much room do we have?
I don't have that set of plans on me, but I think we do have room for the sidewalk behind the curb. Unfortunately, we don't have room between the property line and the trees to, without getting on their property.
And then anytime you put concrete next to a tree, it's asking for trouble down the road. Eventually, you're going to have it popping the concrete up, and you're going to send somebody out every couple of years to replace concrete.
But those are evergreen trees, or what do you call those?
Cypress.
Cypress. Do they do that as much as other trees do?
Well, Jesse's right. Every time you've got a root, you're going to find a sidewalk buckle.
They're pretty mature. I mean, it's not like they're growing a whole lot.
I, I like this because it, it takes care of an immediate need, and, you know, if we want to come down the road and figure out how to redo that whole corridor down through there, we can always come back and do that, and this would still be a usable piece of sidewalk structure, because it still would fill that need of getting people out of Cottonwood Village and into the park. So, you know, we wouldn't lose anything at all, and it sets us up for a future project if we can come up with the funds sometime down the road.
And we've had citizens request on this piece that goes past the library and the health department. We've had citizens request a sidewalk there.
And the other part of it that works out is that at the north end, there's already a access that goes up to that, you know, there's already access there at the north that gets to that parking lot. We're just talking about getting some access out of it at the other, at the south end. So, that sort of completes the loop in that portion.
I've got a different question. Looking at your map, you've got a blue line down here coming off of, is that Paula?
It is Paula Court.
What's that?
That was something we were going to present to the council that. I apologize, I'm going to try to show everyone. The blue line, for those of you who don't have the map, is extending from Paula Circle into the rec center parking lot. There's a drainage issue there where a pipe was built way too low, and that is one that we possibly could get flood control money for, and at the same time, again, construct a sidewalk that could double as a drainage feature, the two days a year that it rains. Of course, we've had more rain than that this year, but it'd be kind of nice to kill two birds with one stone. The problem is that property owner has said absolutely not, will not consider donating an easement, a drainage and sidewalk easement. I apologize, there's actually already a drainage easement there, but he wouldn't make it a pedestrian easement. He wasn't excited about that many people walking through that neighborhood. And the idea was open up that you could literally walk straight from the rec center to the hospital and much more walkable community, but unfortunately, he said not interested at this time.
So, both, both property owners on either side of that easement have said no?
It's actually, that's kind of interesting. That neighborhood is actually a condominium.
Oh, okay.
And it's all owned by one property owner at this time. So, it is easier to get a hold of him.
It's a shame.
He said he wouldn't donate it? Does that mean he might sell it?
I didn't propose it that way without the council's consideration.
Right.
But we've looked at a couple of different access points from that area to the rec center, and they are somewhat limited, because if you get next to somebody's house, they're not interested in having that kind of foot traffic, bike traffic through there, you know, right next to their house.
Is there already some traffic through there now unofficially?
There was more, I think, there was, it was further south. South, that corner right in the employee parking area of the rec center.
Gotcha.
We were coming through there, we got complaints about it, and that's fenced off now. The other area we were looking at is creating a route behind the pool, west of the pool, west of the tennis courts, and there's, yeah, there's an easement right through there that is further away from the homes.
Further away from homes, but still the same property. But I actually do think he would be more open to that.
More open than that.
Okay. Any other comments, or? So, I think that I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm hearing that the council's interested in going with the less expensive plan for now and getting that completed if it works out for the property owners. And if it doesn't, then I guess we wouldn't have a sidewalk from Cottonwood Ranch, or Cottonwood Ranch, from Cottonwood Village to the park, but we would still need to go ahead with the other pieces of that project. And then put on for a future flood control request, the piece that is by the trees, and look at maybe reducing the size of the sidewalk in this particular instance to protect the trees, and then doing the flood control piece of it also.
And just as an observation on that, if you don't want to remove the pipes and put in retaining wall, it's possible you could just run a handrail along the sidewalk to prevent egress down the slope so easily, and that handrail may actually run less than retaining wall would. Just kind of a shot in the dark. It'll be an evaluation at some point.
I agree. I think we may need a handrail either way. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The problem is the pipe's actually higher than the curb right now, so we would need some kind of retaining wall.
Have a slope, yeah.
Hold up the sidewalk.
I'd just pour the concrete on there. Leather to.
Yes, I think I understand that one. So, it sounds like go talk to Cottonwood Village, make sure they're okay with this, move forward with the second option, and then bring back to council at a later date the first option. Is that correct?
Okay.
One other item, if you don't mind. On these plan, on the second option, we had considered landscaping that slope where, right near Cottonwood Village, because one of the problems, I'm sure, is it's just, it's ugly right now, the slope continually falling off. Is that something the council wants to do, or do we want to wait until we can put the sidewalk on it?
I don't really know which, what you're talking about.
Oh, I apologize.
Draw me a picture.
Putting some oversize on that slope to hold it? Putting some oversize on that slope to hold it? Is that what you're talking, to cover the pipe and keep any further erosion?
Yeah, something that's gonna look better than what's here today. You can tell right now it's, it just was never finished. And what we could do with the same project, same funds, is go through here and some sort of a stone that won't slough off, that'll look better. Is that something council wants to move forward with? Or do you rather leave it alone until we can come back and put a sidewalk?
You'd rather put a sidewalk there. But what about the rest of you?
Well, I would, I would agree. I think, I mean, I know that we don't have hootles of money to work with. But it seems like we, we do these projects in these short little phases, and then we try to Band-Aid the rest. And I think it overall gives the city kind of an unfinished appearance. And I, I mean, like, you know, we just finished the one up on Pima or Panal or whatever, but, which is great. But and the one like Cactus, the sidewalk still ends. And it just, I don't like the hobbling, you know, back and forth.
We've been Band-Aiding ever since we incorporated.
So I feel like putting rocks and stuff like that is really just throwing money that could be spent on a, on a real fix, you know? I don't know. I just, I think I'd rather just put that money in the kitty for the ultimate sidewalk. Personally, that's.
It does, it does look bad. I admit that, but.
And one, one thing to consider on that too, though, is that if we were to throw a decent-sized cobble on there, like a six-inch cobble, that would also prevent people from using that slope as foot traffic right now. It might, you know, it'll just, it'll inspire people to use the actual pertinences we're putting in there at either end of it and just keep them from running up and down and walking right into the street where there's no marking or anything like that.
So you're talking about like some, they call it ABC or something?
No, the ABC would be a, be a fine, I'm talking about a course, like a riprap or river rock.
So if we redid the sidewalk after we put that on there, what would we do with that?
That can be, that can be pulled out and put in a storage pile for another project. Not really, doesn't really go bad.
You know, and if I can, council, maybe put this in perspective is, you know, we're still talking about $80,000. And by the time you try and fill in all these red stripes.
We're gonna be way past it.
If you don't go over $80,000. So, you know, this is probably something that we should look at for maybe next year.
Another budget?
Locate some money somewhere else.
Okay.
I think it is advisable to come back, you know, again, depending on whether or not we can, we can fund the sidewalk for this next year. And if we can't, maybe at that point, we look at, you know, some type of a stabilizing design there to make that work. But I think, you know, at this stage of what it's gonna cost to put in the, the rest of the sidewalks that we're looking at, it's, it's probably academic at this point to.
To worry about it too much. It's not like, yeah, there's a lot of extra money to do anything. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, the next item is design, whoops, we just did that. Resolution number 2765, reappointing Mike Warren, a member of the city's Industrial Development Authority Board. And we have the deputy clerk to present this item.
This is just a reappointment of Mike Warren. He's been serving on the IDA board for a number of years now. And we're just seeking to reappoint him.
Okay, he's done a great job. Mr. Howdigee? Yes, please.
Yeah, unless there's discussion on Mr. Warren. Make a motion to approve resolution number 2765, inserting the name of Mike Warren.
Second. Okay, Mr. Howdigee made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy clerk, please read resolution number 2765 by title only.
Resolution number 2765, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Mike, Michael Warren, a member of the Industrial Development Authority Board for the city of Cottonwood and establishing his term of office. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number four, termination of the building lease with the Northern Arizona Boys and Girls Club. We have, who's presenting this? Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, council members, as, as you're aware, we were notified that the Northern Arizona Boys and Girls Club is no longer operational. And so consequently, in looking at our lease, we don't officially have anybody to turn to to say we're gonna terminate the lease. However, the regional office has indicated their support of terminating the lease. And, and I think they're actually waiting for us to do that. So we officially own the building. We have the right to go in at that point and give them access to try and determine the disposition of the property that's, that's in the facility. In talking again with the city attorney about this, we're in agreement that we have the ability through the lease to go ahead and terminate the lease at this point based on the information we've gotten from regional. And so the recommendation to the council is to go ahead and terminate the lease. And we'll continue to work with the regional office to try and clear the building of property that, that may be useful for another nonprofit, particularly other boys and girls clubs around the area who have expressed interest in some of the, some of the supplies.
Okay, and as far as the citizens that have asked about things that they donated, how will that be handled?
Well, I think that's gonna need to be handled through the regional. I mean, generally, when you donate something, you donate it. You give it up. And, you know, I'm not sure that it's appropriate to come back and say, "Well, I want my donation back." But I think that's something that's gonna have to be worked out with the, you know, the regional office of the Boys and Girls Club.
So you're just.
Because again, the city has a right and owns the building, but not the property inside the building.
So you would just refer any questions to the regional director?
Which I've been doing. For instance, there's somebody that has a lien on the vans out there. And I've referred them to the regional office. And that's something that they're gonna have to get worked out.
Okay.
Same with other donated equipment. You know, the hope would be is that they can get it donated to another Boys and Girls Club that can make use of it.
Sad day in the community. Mr. Garrison?
Just a comment. And I, this is my, my shot at doing this is, you know, when, back when the scuttlebutt was, they were gonna close their doors, I had a conversation with the city attorney on, you know, what language we had in our lease that gave us the ability to make sure that people we gave facilities to or gave them the use of, especially when we created a lease that was 25 years long. You know, we, what did we have in there that gave us the ability to reclaim that property if they didn't uphold the intent of what their original purpose was to be? And, and I read through all your yellow lines, and I still don't see how we have a great clause in there that allows us to at least have that discussion if, if people aren't upholding their, their original intent. And so I'm hoping this thing has taught us a little bit about maybe putting a little better language in our future leases so we make sure we give ourselves a better out than having to go through this process that has taken so much of the staff's time over the last seven months.
And we just probably had that example when we approved the teen center lease.
You know, and it, it may be advisable for the council to consider whether 25-year leases are really in the best interest.
I didn't want to do 25 years for the teen center, but I, everyone else thought that was fine, so.
I mean, the council always has the ability to renew, renew, renew.
I think 25 years is a long time.
Long time.
Things can change. So, Mr. Alinsky?
Well, I was, you know, I was disappointed to see that we were considering, you know, revoking the lease. But I, only because I, I think the Boys and Girls Club is, you know, a very good organization. I don't think anyone feels differently. And I'm not, I'm not speaking specifically about this Boys and Girls Club. I just mean nationwide. But, but after reading through the lease, I mean, I understand that there's certainly a lot of liability that would fall on, on the district if anything were to happen out there, you know? I, I understand it's appropriate. But I would hope that in the future, if, if the Boys and Girls Club wants to.
Reorganize?
Reorganize here in the Verde Valley, that we would be supportive of that. Because our youth would benefit. And it's important to have them, embrace them in your community, so. Though I agree, I think it's the right, proper thing to do in this situation. You know, I don't want us to turn our backs on the Boys and Girls Club.
And, I mean, it did really fill a niche for the community that the city's really not able to fill that niche totally. And then the teen center, you know, takes in a little bit. But it does kind of leave a hole for people that need a place for their children.
And, you know, based on the comments from the, the regional office, they certainly have an interest in, in trying to reestablish back here in the Verde Valley somewhere. You know, the question is one of timing, finances, those kind of things. It may take them a little bit of time to kind of dig out of the hole that they were left with.
Possibly. There's, there's maybe working with the community churches. There might be somebody interested in having some after-school programs there at that facility. That's my hope, anyway. I think it's a valuable asset to a lot of the working parents and such.
Absolutely.
Be able to have someplace they, they can send those young people and.
Rather than have them be latchkey kids.
Well, yeah, or running around doing, you know, eventually what kids do.
I think, I believe the schools are trying to set up a program.
Yeah, but I would question how affordable that's going to be from the last figures that we got. And I think that's part of the issue.
And part of, I mean, because it was affordable is why they are not, I mean, they weren't able to get the money to run.
Well, and, and of course, with, with the downturn of the economy, you know,
Right, that hurt everybody.
A lot of the donors and a lot of the fundraisers that were held in the past kind of fell by the wayside.
Weren't as successful, you know? That's very true. So I would entertain, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak about the Boys and Girls Club item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, since I led the rally to keep him open last time, I'd like to make the motion to regretfully so, I must say.
Regretfully.
To terminate the building lease with the Northern Arizona Boys and Girls Club.
Second.
So Mr. Howdigee, Howdigee regretfully made the motion, and Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
The mayor made the motion. Councilmember Garrison seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mayor made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn.